I'd like to call the Celine City Council. In order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda in front of us and, um, let's wait. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Second law. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. I think we'll wait for the absences till the end of the meeting. Planning Commission Chair, Ms. Heft has a presentation on the annual report for the Planning Commission. Thank you for coming this evening and taking your time.
No problem. I know how to use this computer. Yeah, I used to be doing it. While we're getting ready for that, you're going to be surprised because we're taking last February, so it must be said there was snow on the ground and it's a little different. But coming back to this report today that I completed last February, it was somewhat surprising to me to remember what we did in 2009. And if you'll direct yourself to the screen, whoops, it must be on automatic. If you direct yourself to the screen, this is what we did complete. A preliminary site plan, a final site plan, two combined, seven site plan amendments, special land use, site plan extensions, five of them, ordinances, three, two other. We had 15 regular meetings and one special meeting during that period of time. This was our 2009 commission, of which I'm sure you recognize names because up until this point, we've been a very stable commission as far as the number of individuals. And these individuals are, have served a long time and I respect greatly as we have gone through our years as being, as I have gone through the years as being chair. This came from being online, so that's why the timing, I think, on the slides. Our first preliminary site plan and final site plan was with St. Andrews at 910 Austin Road. Preliminary was introduced in July of that year and final in December. And here you see the addition, which is in the process right now, the two-story addition on the left-hand side that's on the west side of the building. We also did a combined preliminary and final site plan at First United Methodist Church at 1200 North Ann Arbor. And there you really see the snow. That has also been completed now and I believe we're going to have the dedication this month yet. So as a result, it is one of the projects that you see in our community. Baker's Nook also did that addition and I do not have a picture of that at 900 West Michigan. The Celine District Library at 555 North Maple Road had a site plan amendment and I took a picture of, in the upper right-hand corner, of the parking lot in the winter because this just showed portions of it. St. Joe Mercy Hospital, Celine Hospital, 400 Brussels Street. And we have all seen the completion of that addition that, with the new testing and diagnostic facilities. Pavel Pop at 1200 Woodland Drive East, and you recognize this building, also came toward the extension. Renshler Farm on East Michigan Ave. And the building that they added, right, Mr. Rhodes, is to the right?
Correct.
Okay.
It's out of the picture.
Yes, it's out of the picture. At the time, I wasn't sure where it was and I think I even took it before that was completed. So as a result, it's to the right in the last row along the front of Tractor Supply. Molded Materials at 1715 Woodland Drive. As we know, the back building of R&amp;B. And I again took the picture in the lower right-hand corner of the entire facility and then the addition there. Associated Spring at 1445 Barnes Court. And that facility is on the south side, the addition they did. And again, that was not completed at the time that I took the picture, so different. American Legion Post added, had to do some redoing in the parking area behind the building closer to the water. Special land use, we had a special land use connected to the St. Andrews project. Champion Driving School at 1207 Industrial Drive. And MSA instruction on Woodland Drive. And this one is hard to recognize where it is. It's in that first ready's, first R&amp;B building right on the corner of Maple. It's more across from the middle school somewhere. Site plan extension, Sherretiere, 1294 Beach Court. And that was, came forward and we extended it to this year. Village Marketplace and Lofts. Clean Getaway Car Wash, we extended. Chelsea Lumber. Banks of Celine. And so then I thought I'd take a moment to talk to you about 2010, as long as I get the floor. We're in the process of the master plan review and reviewed that for the first time at our last meeting. We've had several actions related to commercial and industrial projects and as I look through the minutes from 2010, most of those revisions were of existing site plans. We did an ordinance this year. And I mentioned previously that we were somewhat of a solid commission that didn't have a lot of change. And then we welcomed this year two new commissioners and have fit in very well to our group as we continue to handle the duties of the Planning Commission. That's my quick review. Many of these projects, you realize, are completed now since I took the pictures earlier in the year and appreciate the fact that you allowed us to come forward and see what we've done throughout this year. Any questions? Oh, Mr. Morrow, I thought you were pointy.
That's how I reference the mayor to call on me. I'll take that as a disapproving tone of that gesture. But Mrs. Heft, I appreciate the very thorough presentation and your leadership. I just have a question. I guess it's not geared as much towards you as it is the staff. But why, if Chairwoman Heft completed this presentation in February, are we just reviewing it in mid-September?
Good question. I don't know.
It would have seemed to me a little bit more timely to have reviewed it at the beginning of the year as opposed to eight, nine ones.
I'm not really sure why it's not on the agenda. We actually put out a call to all the commissions, clerks working on, getting all the commissions up here, so.
Okay.
I didn't realize that, I guess I didn't realize it was complete, so.
Oh, okay. I did it in February. That's a downtown for me, so I did the pictures and put it together in February with those details. So that's why all the snow.
Well, maybe we should just plan on having the Planning Commission be in February if that would be most convenient, although we may change this chair, so.
That's true.
But I don't know if that, we could just regularly schedule that because we don't have a required period of time. We just, and actually, you know, we haven't really had formal annual reports from our commissions up. I mean, just, we just started doing this pretty recently, so there isn't really a formalized program.
Well, yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor. And I actually think that the formal reports are very beneficial. I just think this would resonate more and be more timely if it was done, you know, at the beginning of the year as opposed to eight, nine ones into the following year. So it's just my recommendation, my, my opinion.
Are there any questions for Chairperson?
Thank you for your time and we appreciate it.
Thanks for your service.
Now, next on the agenda, we have citizen comments on agenda items. On the Open Muses Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person and the citizen comment period will be limited to a total of 45 minutes. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak to anything on the agenda?
Mary has 600 Canterbury. May I close this lid? Okay. In regard to the 1063, the ordinance of the complete street ordinances. And it talks about accessibility. And of course, I am still talking about the Breckengrill sidewalk we used to have that was adjacent to Breckengrill that has been decreased to a 36-inch pathway. I, everything in, at the public hearing that talked about the non-motorized, we're talking about 10-foot paths, we're talking about everything. And yet the sidewalks, of which it says in part of this ordinance is that it's going to be in accordance with the American With Disabilities Act accessibility guidelines. Ordinance 731 also talks about a safe network for pedestrians, safe for all ages and abilities in accordance with the city of Celine non-motorized plan. It also mentions that a minimum to accommodate for accessibility. I'm hoping, and as I know the requests for the sidewalk cafes come up yearly, I am hoping that the council will refer this three-foot pathway, when the other ones have five feet, such as sidewalk, to the planning, planners or Carlisle Workman for them to look at the whole area and issues. I know, Mayor, you had said, yes, there was a problem with the tree grills and we're going to look into replacing them and we're looking into the trip hazards, but that's been over a couple of months ago. If somebody falls, that won't work. And I also personally, and I really feel as a taxpayer, I want to walk next to the building. If people want to sit on the curb and eat their lunch, God bless them. But I want to walk next to the building. At the fair, the, all the tables and the chairs were still out and it was very, very hard for people to maneuver around that corner. And I saw people and their kids and hands and they have a right to walk safely. If you want to put the street unsafe and the curb, that's fine. But I am requesting that this go to the planners because if we're talking about pathways and sidewalks, it's proactive instead of reactive. And I would appreciate you addressing this next spring.
Thank you.
And I don't know how long Mr. Paul has his chairs and tables up till November. They're not, I mean, there's 10 on the side and there's four in the front and we were doing math. And the two benches, that's 60 seats outside. That's not really a sidewalk cafe.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen comments on, any items on the agenda? That will move on the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted. Support.
You have a, I'd like to take something off. 10-131.
Okay, 10-131, we'll put after the funding agreement, 10-135. Mr. Ivey, would you be open to changing your motion to, as amended? And second, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Under unfinished business, item 1063, ordinance number 731, complete streets ordinance, we have a presentation of the ordinance with our planner Lucy Fortin and our Public Works Director, Mr. Fordice. Thank you for coming tonight.
Well, we set this up, I'm just explaining, this is the first reading of the ordinance that we have been offered of, and yet we want to see that in the package. We want to make a very brief presentation this evening. Oh, I'm sorry.
The same, in this one?
Either one.
It's going to be the presentation, if you would hear about a month ago or three weeks rather ago, it's the same presentation that I wish to make again tonight. And it, and I'll get right into it, so I don't know if we're going to do the lights. This, this project was made possible through a grant from the Washtenaw County Public Health and it's a, in continuance of your non-motorized transportation efforts. This one's matter?
I think you need to turn the moving one, the portable one.
Turn it off. Thank you. Does this work?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Unfortunately, it doesn't look so great. But let me, let me go through it because it's not, the pictures don't, are not as important as what I'm going to say, hopefully. What are complete streets? Complete streets is designing and thinking about your roadways not only for cars, but also for pedestrians and for bicyclists and for any other users of all ages and abilities. So it takes into account how people use street. There are several benefits to thinking of streets as complete. It's providing transportation options and Celine has been very forth-thinking in having, adopting a non-motorized transportation plan. And what we wish to do and continue with this policy and this ordinance is implementing this plan. So we are promoting safety, that's what complete streets do, and improving human health and hopefully decreasing car traffic and reducing pollution. All those are benefits. When you think about streets and what affects pedestrians and bicyclists in the street, of course, if there's a sidewalk or no sidewalk, it does affect pedestrians. Also, traffic volume and speed are critical in how safe and comfortable pedestrians will be in a, in a street environment. When you think about bicyclists when they use streets, same thing. I mean, a lot of bicyclists prefer to be on the roadway itself and so if there's a bicycle lane to accommodate their presence, it certainly makes it safer for everyone involved, motorists as well as bicyclists. Well, this, this really ruins it. Okay. So I'm going to continue referring now to what in, what's in your package as far as the ordinance. Tonight is the first reading of the ordinance and in, the ordinance is structured in several ways. First, I want to mention that the state of Michigan passed two bills this summer for complete streets, for making it easier for communities to adopt these ordinances and, and policies. A lot of communities in Michigan have these policies in place, notably Ann Arbor, your neighbors to the north have such things. And so whenever there is a construction project in Ann Arbor, they take into account their non-motorized plan. They look at implementing some bicycle lanes, providing safe crosswalks, pedestrian refuge. They take all of that into account and this is what this ordinance is wanting Celine to do. The ordinance itself is in three parts. The first part of the ordinance, and this is directly in your paper, defines the term. The second part addresses the type of improvements that you will find in the ordinance and they, they follow the non-motorized transportation plan. And it talks about how the plan will be taken into account and it talks about the types of accommodation and how the plan will need to be updated with time and how it needs to meet certain standards, notably the ADA standards, the, several standards that needs to be in place. And then the third part of the ordinance refers to exceptions. With any policy, there's always exceptions and, and the major ones being costs being prohibitive, the need, absence of need in now or in the future. If the stretch proposed is too small to be very worth doing. I think I'm covering the major items. Jeff, do you want to add anything to that? I don't know.
Thank you. One of the other exceptions was if the construction work was due to an emergency situation and have time to plan for implementation of a non-motorized plan. I'd just like to step back a little bit and say that this ordinance, the whole process we've gone through was funded by a grant that we received through the Washtenaw County Public Health Department. They received their funding from the Michigan Department of Community Health, which received funding from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And then the state decided to dedicate a portion of those funds that they received to complete streets ordinances. So we took a portion of our grant to develop this ordinance and hired Carlisle Wortman to do the initial research and language development for us and help with the public presentations. As Lucy mentioned, we did hold a workshop August 23rd. We had pretty good attendance at that. Most of the council was there and several members of the public. And we had a really good discussion on the ordinance and the non-motorized plan and what, what we have planned for the future. And this ordinance is a, is a key part of that, keeping us, holding us to task on the implementation of the plan and keeping it moving forward. So tonight, we brought it to you as presentation discussion option for any last-minute questions. Mull it over for a week and we'll bring it back next week, hopefully for adoption.
Maybe we can do the presentation. I don't know if you are going to come back next week or?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. Since, I don't know, there seems to be some technical difficulties.
The projector only likes to do one presentation at a time.
The projector?
Then you need to put in first.
I don't think we have anything else on the agenda for presentations. But how about, I know most of the council was at the public forum that you had, so I don't know if any council members have any questions at this point about the ordinance? Okay. So I thank you for your presentation and you're dealing with our technical difficulties and we will continue forward and then we will again have it on our agenda for the second reading on Monday. In the meantime, do we have, is there a possibility we could get it on our website for, since we weren't able to put it up? Okay, that'd be great. If we could get it on the main page and sort of for this week, since that was the idea, was to get out to the public. Okay, so we don't have any questions at this point. We had the presentation and we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 8, 2010 memo from Public Works Director Fordice to acknowledge receipt and first reading of ordinance number 731, ordinance to amend, Chapter 74 Streets, Sidewalks and Public Improvements of the Celine City Code by adding at the end, therefore, Article 8, Complete Streets, to provide for and regulate and design principle to promote a safe network of access for pedestrians, bicyclists and motorists of all ages and abilities.
So move.
Move Rhodes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ivey. Further discussion on this motion? As I said earlier, there will be a second reading and consideration of adoption at the next meeting in a week, so all in favor of this receipt, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Under new business, we have item 10-132, ordinance number 730, the rezoning of 200 North Ann Arbor Street. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 30th, 2010 memo from Celine City Planning Commission, August 18th, 2010, land use and zoning analysis from Carlisle Wortman Associates Incorporated, August 5th, 2010, recommendation from the Historic District Commission to acknowledge receipt and reading of proposed ordinance number 730 and ordinance to change the zoning of Lot 18, Sessors Platte Number Two, which is 200 North Ann Arbor Street, Union School. The city of Celine, according to recorded platte thereof from R1C, single-family residential to C2 central business, to approve and adopt or not adopt ordinance number 730 as submitted.
Move to approve and adopt. Second.
Move Rhodes, second, Morrow?
Yes.
To approve and adopt. Discussion. Possibly, Mr. Rubel? Do you want to talk about the planning decision since Chairperson Heft is in here?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lawan could not be here tonight because he had a prior commitment to answer any questions on his report, but I could try to, to answer anything that you had. Mr. Mitchell Road and some of his associates are here tonight to, to represent the ownership or proposed ownership of the project. Mr. Road provided a very nice presentation at the Planning Commission meeting. I know the mayor and Mr. Law and I believe Mr. Morrow attended that meeting and certainly he could tell you his earnest efforts and intent to utilize the property in a very proper manner and retain its historical significance in the community. The parcel in question for rezoning is just the parcel where the Union School and its parking lot occupy and it's not the portion that's known as Henry Field or its improvements to the, to the north. If you read through Mr. Lawan's report, you'll see that he and staff looked at various options and as far as the type of implement or what type of tool it would take to get the property into proper use category and it was determined that rezoning was the appropriate method. Also fits the intent, purpose of the master plan, the latest amendment proposed to the master plan. So that, that's, those are the, the large considerations and if you have detailed questions, it would be either I or Mr. Road could probably answer some of that.
Does council have questions or Mr. Rubel? Mr. Rhodes?
Perhaps not as much for Mr. Rubel as for the potential future owner, but I know that Historic District Commission had some concerns about the maintenance of the historic integrity of that particular structure and how it fits within our downtown and it might be worthwhile for the audience at home to hear some comments about that.
Actually, also I'd like, we were going to have our staff, Mr. Fordice, who is the staff representative with Historic District Commission, talk about the requirements within the Historic District so people understand that. So welcome, thank you.
Sure. Well, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. As Gary mentioned, we, we got the opportunity to speak at the Planning Commission a few, a few weeks ago. Our intent is nothing but the best for Union School. We are an advanced engineering R&amp;D company that, that works on a lot of eclectic projects, anything from surveillance projects for the government to tracking horses, to developing commercial video games. And so it's a very weird and fun mix of projects and a, and a weird and fun mix of people, I'll say. We, when I looked for headquarters for the past couple of years, we found a lot of kind of very, let's say, non-unique industrial buildings, steel buildings, things that have been built out as office space that really didn't fit our character. And when we looked around, the opportunity came up for Union School. We saw that as something that would definitely absolutely fit our character in the sense that it's, it's a interesting building. It has beautiful architectural details. It's a place that would send the right message to our customers, which is that though we're very busy creating the future, we're also very respectful of the past and we appreciate history. And, and, and we like the, kind of, let's say, the different nature of being a high-tech company in a, in a historic building. Certainly, having a historic building will have its challenges in terms of maintenance and upkeep. It's definitely not the most efficient thing to have from a cost perspective, from a packing people in there perspective or any of these kind of things. But both me and my staff thought that, we, we all basically fell in love with the building and have great respect for what it is now. Certainly, if we had great intentions toward making it into something that it isn't now, it would not be, to be honest, it would not be cost-effective in any way. We like it as it is. We see only doing nice, anything that would be nice in terms of upgrading or restoring it to its former glory, not that it isn't beautiful right now. But I, I think that any changes that we would make to Union School would be only positive ones and ones consistent and I think observed very positive by the community. That would, that would be my answer to that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Thank you. So in the notes, so I appreciate your asking that question because it is a different audience than the Planning Commission. In the notes from the memo and the motion, there was some comments from some of the neighbors who had expressed some concerns about the change of the use of the property and the impact on the green space. And I was wondering if our staff to Historic District Commission could talk about what Historic District restrictions there would be on that property since that is within a historic district? Specifically, there was concerns about, you know, the building coming down and, you know, basically putting a commercial property right up against the sidewalk. And I know, I don't think you were at the meeting, but, you know, that the green space would be gone and again, would have, but, you know, negatively to the neighbors to the north and across the road. So if you could address the restrictions that are within a historic district, that might be helpful. And then also, I know just one other thing that, we did talk about doing an overlay district ultimately and that will be on the Planning Commission. And it's also in your notes that that's on the Planning Commission's next charge after we finish the master plan. So that will also be helpful, but.
Well, within a normal, normal is not the right, a typical historic district, the, the commission would have commission would have authority on anything that changed or altered the exterior appearance of a building, going so far as to include sidewalks, driveways, landscaping and things like that. When our Historic District Commission was created, we placed a fairly significant restriction that this HDC only has authority to review changes to the exterior that require a building permit. So anything that would be done on that property that would require a building permit, the HDC would have the authority to review and either modify the change or deny the change or approve the change. So the HDC, in terms of appearance of the existing building, has a very broad authority to say yea or nay to any changes there. If they wanted to build something in the front green space, of course, they'd be subject to setback regulations. And if whatever they wanted to build required a building permit, then the HDC would have review authority over that and again could say yes or no. So it's, the authority of the HDC to regulate changes within an established district is very broad and I believe there's a very strong court record of it being a strong and enforceable authority.
Does anybody have any questions?
I would like to add to that, though. The HDC did pass a motion earlier making a recommendation on the zoning and, you know, they were, my feeling from the commission is that nobody was opposed to the use that's proposed there now and the company that's moving in. They all thought that was a great match for the building, good fit in the neighborhood, but they were concerned about, as noted in Mr. Luan's report, some of the other commercial activities that might come in with a C2 zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further questions on the motion? Ms. Ivy?
Not a question, Mayor, thank you. Just a comment. I am glad to hear, Mayor, that the setting up of the overlay district is going to be a priority for the planning commission in the very near future. And I think that goes to address the concerns that some have that this should not be C2 and should be another classification. So I know that there were several, I did not attend the planning commission meeting when this was approved, but there were several commissioners who spoke out in favor of the overlay district. So I trust that will not take a long time to accomplish. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion, Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reference, in addition to what Jeff said, the memorandum from, or Mr. Fordice, excuse me, the memorandum from the HDC dated August 5th. I am the council liaison to the HDC and have been on that board since 2007. And I did vote in favor of the motion to recommend that the rezoning be made for an OS classification as opposed to C2. But after attending the planning commission meeting and listening to comments made by both city engineer or consultant, Mr. Luan and Mr. Fordice, although I think it might be more ideal that it be rezoned as C2, I don't see anything that objectionable about it being classified as an OS, or excuse me, I don't see it that objectionable that's a C2 as opposed to OS. And I think this is a really outstanding and great investment in our downtown and a wonderful addition to our business community. And I'm looking forward to seeing and expecting great things out of your company. And I enthusiastically endorse this motion. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? I guess I would also just like to say, I know some of the school members are here and I think the whole community is looking forward to a successful reuse of this building in a positive way. So thank you for your interest in preserving our history and bringing us forward in the future also. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve and adopt the ordinance number 730 as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under item 10-133, application to purchase MERS accredited service from Dennis Grushow, so it'd be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 13th, 2010 memo from City Manager Campbell and the August 11th, 2010 letter from Police Officer Dennis Grushow. Do we have a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Second Ping. Discussion? Any questions regarding the memo? No? All in favor to acknowledge receipt, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the governing body resolutions outlined at the bottom of the page of the application for additional accredited service submitted by Dennis Grushow with his membership certification dated August 11th, 2010, for the total estimated actual area cost of the additional accredited service in the amount of $82,571 to be paid by Officer Grushow if approved, and that the Celine City Clerk be authorized or not authorized to sign the governing body resolution and forward to MERS. Do we have a motion? Is there no motion?
Move to approve and adopt and authorize.
Second.
Move laws, second, Morrow. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10-134 is traffic control orders East Bennett, Willis Road and Woodland Drive. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 29th, 2010 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel regarding traffic control orders to approve and adopt or not adopt traffic control order numbers 2189, 2190, 2191, 2182 and 2193 for installation and implementation of various signage on East Bennett Street, Willis Road and Woodland Drive. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve and adopt.
Second. Rhodes, second Ping. Approve and adopt, discussion? Ms. Ping.
I was hoping that with the new traffic control orders, we might be able to have some extra patrol, police patrol in those areas, just so people get used to, especially the crosswalk on Woodland.
How's that going? Have we gotten feedback from the schools?
We have, and we have, in my communicate, we did have a pretty good presence that first week, police presence as well as partnership with the schools. And of course, our superintendent of schools is here, as well as our DPW director, Mr. Fordice. But either Mr. Gray nor if he wanted to speak, I don't know, Scott if.
I can assure that it's gone extremely well. I do appreciate that, and the support that we're developing that crosswalk. I appreciate the feedback. Several years ago, there was a pedestrian accident involving one of our students that spoke to the mother on Sunday. I just said, I'll thank you towards the state that deeply able to accomplish that and partnership with the city. The other aspects in terms of patrols in the areas, schools started last week, we worked collaboratively with the city's department. A larger amount of police buses on Woodland Drive throughout the day, between the morning and afternoon, to reroute the traffic on our campus area. We're continuing to try and clear up the dust and manage the traffic on our campus, hopefully in getting our students to reach out and give them backup. The road was up, creating backups on the roadways themselves, which was a simple pass. It was working fairly well and certainly was improved over last year.
And I would concur that we did, we have had some, the very first day of school, that crosswalk wasn't utilized, but as the days have gone on, more and more kids have been utilizing it, it's working very well. We actually also have a crossguard stationed there. So to make sure and also to make sure that they're pushing the button to light, so the crosswalk lights up. And obviously, it's more evident during the, when it's darker or dusk, but you can still, as you get closer, you can still see the lights in the daylight.
How long has it been crossguarded there?
I'm sorry?
You got your crossguard there permanently now?
Correct.
It's moved across, it's older than.
Oh, further south?
Right, right.
West, right.
Moved it to the east.
Okay. Okay. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10-135, the funding agreement with Celine Historical Society, Rensselaer Farm. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 7th, 2010 memo, Public Works Director Fordice to authorize or not authorize an expenditure of $20,050 for repairs at the Rensselaer Farm from line item 101-900-977-035, with the Celine Historical Society to reimburse the city $5,050 for said repairs with money received from grants and historical society monies.
Move to authorize.
Move Morrow, do we have a second?
Support.
Second Rhodes. Discussion? Mr. Morrow?
No, I don't have any discussion. I think it's a great motion.
Yes.
Thank you, Grace.
My apologies. In this motion, we're moving to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Public Works Director Fordice, who refers to Mr. Rhodes' letter, Mr. Rhodes in his capacity as president of the Celine Historical Society. But there's no acknowledgement or receipt of Mr. Rhodes' letter, and I wondered if that should be in there. I think Mr. Rhodes' letter certainly addresses the method of compensating the city for the extra $5,500.
Well, it is referred to in a memo from Mr. Fordice specifically in that first paragraph.
It is referred to, but there really isn't an explanation as to how that money is going to come about. Perhaps that's not something in detail that we need to know.
I don't believe that, I mean, it's up to the mover and the second, but we do have on the last sentence of the motion to reimburse the city with money received from grants and historical society monies, $5,000. So that's in the motion that they would be required to do that as part of this. But if the mover and the second want to add a reference to the letter?
Mayor, I think the motion as it reads currently suffices, but if Mr. Ivy feels so strongly about it, I'm certainly amenable to including language to acknowledge Mr. Rhodes', to acknowledge receipt of Mr. Rhodes' memorandum.
Rhodes?
Yeah, I would support that.
Okay, so after acknowledge receipt of September 7th, 2010 memo for Public Works Director Fordice and the September 7th, 2010 letter from Celine Historic Society President David Rhodes. That would be the motion. And then move on to authorize or not authorize? Further discussion on the motion?
I could, I'd just mention that the Historic Society is grateful for the support that the city continues to provide. And the reason that these three items are lumped together is because they impact each other, and it would not make sense to do one without having done the other two, or to do two without having done three. And we realize that that exceeded the amount that was budgeted for that kind of work out at the farm. And so Historic Society has obtained a $4,000 grant and we have some other monies that we could shift around in order to cover that. So we very much appreciate the advancement of $5,050 for those repairs.
Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Change the agenda, item 10-131, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 8th, 2010 memo for Finance Director Ricoin regarding information on job creation related tax abatements and file. Do we have a motion?
Are we moving to approve or?
We're moving to acknowledge receipt and file.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt, Mayor.
I'll second.
Morrow, second. Ivy? Discussion, Ms. Ping, you had a question?
I do, I have a couple of questions. The first being on the backside of the memo, where it says actual numbers, those are, are those totals? I guess I'm a little confused where it says the IFT, number of employees, current projected and then actual.
Yeah, I can quickly go through that and make it clear.
Okay.
Some of the companies did not achieve their numbers and some did. So as we go through it, American Soy is the first one. They started out with 43 and with two tax abatements, they said they would achieve 51 and they achieved 51. So that one did achieve what they said they would. Automotive Components Holdings, through their various IFTs, you see the current and projected, that difference is about 500 additional employees. They exceeded adding 500 employees, they added closer to 1,000. So ACH did achieve their employment goal. Condit Lubricants?
So it's not the total of the projected?
No.
It's the bottom number is the number we should be looking at?
What we look at is on one line at a time, we look at the current and the projected and that difference. Now, some of these, these are by portions of the plant, these are by sections of the plant, lines of production. Some of these, like one in 2004 and one in 2008, that could be the same line. And they could have an investment and four years later have another investment. But what we look at is the difference between the current and the projected, how much they said they would improve or add on. And if you take that difference for all five, it adds up to about 500, and they actually added more than 500 employees. So they did achieve at their plant. Condit Lubricants, the next one, they did not. They started out with zero and with two tax abatements, they said they would achieve 40, but they only achieved 31. And that has to do with the volume of business and, you know, what they're doing. Some companies can't predict the future certainly as to how much business they will have. So they did not achieve the number of employees. And same, do you want me to do the rest? Digipod did not also.
Well, I guess, so my question is, you know, and I've talked about this before, is that some of these IFTs were based on job creation points that were awarded to the IFT. Do we have a mechanism to go back and figure out if them not meeting this job creation number that was given to, giving them points in order to receive a longer abatement period, do we go back at all to try to figure out, would they have actually still been in a three-year, five-year category based on the lower amount of jobs that were actually created?
Well, the jobs number is about 10% of the overall points. And probably, instead of five years, they might have gotten four years or something like that. There are some cases in which they would not have gotten the full number of years. If you look at the entire list overall, of the total of what all of these companies said they would add as jobs and of the actual jobs that were created, there were more jobs created than the total of what they said that would add. But in some specific cases, some companies will be high, some companies will be low. Some companies would have been given more years. Some companies would have been given less years, but only by little, only by one year up or down probably, because the jobs creation portion of the guidelines is small. So some companies would have been given one more year, some companies would have been given one less year, if we had known the future perfectly.
I guess I would ask council to, I mean, I won't be here for very much longer, but hopefully in the near future, council will look at our system because it's flawed in how we award points for IFTs based on future projected job creation. And, you know, if we're awarding people abatements for future tax breaks based on jobs that aren't created, then the system is flawed and it's the rest of the taxpayers who bear the burden of those people not being able to do what they said they were going to do. So that's all.
Although we remove them down one year for those people that actually create more employment. So on average, nobody's carrying the burden because some would be one year higher, some would be one year lower. It probably averages out.
I mean, I'm sure this is going to come before a special projects commission.
Yes.
Because this has been an issue, ongoing issue. So we can discuss it in special projects and bring it back to council. Mr. Morrow, you had a comment?
Yeah, just, Lee, because I think that the general public and those watching in the audience tonight deserve to know the facts. You indicated, or you referenced Condit Lubricants and Digipod and that they have both at this time, as of today, not created the jobs they indicated they would create when they were awarded their IFTs. But if I'm not mistaken, of course, I've been on the special projects commission now for two, three years, it's, the assumption is made that they will create those jobs throughout the period that they've been given the abatement. And in both of those cases, if I read your memorandum correctly, their abatement
if I read your memorandum correctly, their abatements haven't expired yet.
Right, and also, what's not written there is that I believe that both Condat and Digipod did create the jobs. They don't have the existing jobs at this time because of the economic slowdown. It's not that they didn't create them, but they've actually pulled back somewhat.
Well, I just want to make it clear that they may have not created the jobs at this time, but they still have a period in which to create them.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we're not finished.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate, and there's certainly merit to what Councilwoman Ping has said, and I guess my recommendation would be, if we don't currently do this already, Mr. Burgoyne, is at special projects, is we provide some sort of memorandum and a recap of these IFTs once they expire. Because I think that data, if they didn't create jobs, I think that data is important for the special projects commissioners to be aware of if, in fact, these industries or corporations come back and request IFTs.
Actually, on average, they create more jobs than they say they will.
Well, either way, whether they create more, create what they said they would, or create less, I think it's important that that be communicated to the commission.
Further discussion? So we have a motion to receive and file, and we will bring it back, I can get you a plane and bring it back to SPC anyhow, so all in favor to receive and file, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item under discussion, commission committee reports from council members. Do you have any, Mr. Law?
Well, as you alluded to, Mayor, earlier, and some other members maybe as well, about the master plan that the planning commission dealt with at our most recent meeting, that's going forward, there's been some tinkering with some of the language and some of the changes, just, you know, minor things, nothing major. The overlay district was addressed and was, spoke of during that meeting, and I think, as you mentioned, Mayor, that somebody did that, that's going to be brought back, once we get the planning, once we get the master plan back, which should be, I think, in October in our meeting. And we asked as a commission that our planner put that in there in some form of language that we'll be able to see with our own eyes and digest it and decide whether or not it's something that should be in there. So that's what we have right now.
Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I have an update from the Celine Area Senior Center. We had our executive board meeting today, and we have our general membership meeting and luncheon this coming Wednesday. But on October 14, the staff of the Celine Area Senior Center is very proud to be hosting a bipartisan healthcare forum, in which we have a guest speaker coming in, Dr. Cook, who's a physician, a medical physician at U of M Hospital in Ann Arbor, and he is going to be speaking about the federal healthcare reform package that passed the Congress earlier this year and was signed into law by President Obama. That'll take place on the 14th of October at 4:00 PM at the senior center. They encourage all seniors to attend, but also anybody in the community who's interested in knowing more about that legislation. And they encourage you to RSVP by either emailing or calling the center. But they've had quite a few people sign up already, and it should be a pretty insightful and interesting late afternoon, early evening. So please help us promote that, and hopefully, some of my colleagues on council can come as well.
Other commission committee reports? Mr. Rhodes?
Just a comment that I'm, my break from reporting on the Celine Youth Council will end. They have in their first formal meeting of the school year on September 21st, and so I will thereafter have reports from that group.
Other commission committee reports? I think only the BDA has been going in, I don't know if you want to talk about your experience with the Michigan Main Street program, because you were there last Thursday, right?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor's, Mayor alluded, BDA, working, we're actually in the associate level of the Michigan Main Street program, and those are, for the associate level, there's four required trainings to attend, and we have thus far, and there's two sessions of each training, and we, I believe, we've had a total of 10 people that have attended, staff as well as community, members of the community, business owners, that type of thing, which is critical to the success of this, because it is a partnership, it's not just government, as we've discussed before, it's a partnership between the city, but as well as the downtown business folks. So it was, there were some good, we, the one that I attended was actually in Scottville, small community next to Luddington, and on the west side, and they had some good examples of what they're doing, and they're in the next phase, which I believe is the select level. And I believe the other group, which I believe the mayor attended was, and I believe also Mr. Rhodes attended, was in Marshall, the same things, with some good information on the, we call the four points of the Main Street organization and their program. And so I think it was well received by our group, mine understanding it was, it was well received, I believe, by the other group. So we'll have the next round of training, I believe, in October, I think. So, and I believe we're going to be discussing it at our BDA in some pretty good detail, and to discuss on how we want to disseminate this information out to folks, because that's where it's critically important to certainly, and that would include making some sort of presentation to the city council as well, but it's also vitally important to make that similar presentation to the folks that we need to be involved in our community too, so.
Thanks. Any other commission reports? Any reports or other announcements?
I would just, we have a dare outing today, so, I think some of us are a little, but we did the fundraiser, which was very successful, I'd like to thank all the volunteers that worked on that. They had a full crew of 40 teams, and they, I think, were very successful monetarily, goes to good program in the schools. And there's a senior parade next week, does any, do you remember what time it is, at 1:00 or something?
Yeah.
1:00.
Goes down Bennett?
Yeah, there's a breakfast before that, there's a ribbon cutting ceremony.
Is that open, are they all open to the public?
Yeah, in fact, all, everyone here should have received an invitation in the mail. The breakfast is at Brecken, does that begin at 9:00?
I think it was 9:00.
9:00, then there's a ribbon cutting ceremony, or some sort of ceremony at Mill Park.
I think we probably need to make sure, if it's open to the public, that it's on the city calendar. And then also, following Saturday is the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest, which is a really great event downtown, and the merchants are working hard on putting something together. I don't know, does anybody have any other reports or announcements?
Sorry, Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize all those who participated in the Celine Community Fair last week, especially the directors and officers who this year celebrated their 75th anniversary, their Diamond Jubilee. It was a great week of entertainment and enjoyment and competition for all who participated.
I'm grateful. Ms. Ping?
Congratulations to you for your ribbon on your tomatoes.
Well, thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to put a little plug in, during the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest, the Foundation for Celine Area Schools is going to be doing a, are you smarter than a fifth grader? And it's twofold, one, to raise awareness for the foundation, because there are many people in the community who don't know the foundation exists, and it's there to benefit programs and allocates grant money for programs in the schools that aren't normally funded within the school budget. It does not include teacher salaries, benefits, things like that, it's specific to programs for kids. And so, Mr. Grayden, I don't know if you, if Mrs. Haff talked to you about the challenge between, I know I spoke to some of you before, but the challenge between the school board versus city council, and they'll, they will be keeping tally, has the school board accepted?
They have done, we're going to be talking about it tomorrow night.
Okay, all right, so...
You have a chance to back out, if you have something to say.
So we would like to invite city council to take part, and it is going to go from 11:00 to 8:30, I believe, and then we'll have portions where we do out in front of the stage where it's very public, and Mr. Morrow is going to be emceeing with Buster the school bus, and so it should be a fun and lively event. We're going to have a couple other celebrities there also. So I think actually Mr. Grayden is participating, and I think Chief Button, and I think I owe you a phone call, so.
And you can win an iPod, or an iPad, excuse me.
We actually have a couple of great presents, so it's, it is, for people who are interested in supporting the foundation, it is $20 a question. If you get your question right, you're entered into a drawing, and there will be several prizes. I do know, in fact, for, that for sure, one prize is an iPad. So it's a pretty nice little...
That's a nice gift.
Gift as you win, if you win, and you can obviously enter and do as many questions as you'd like, so, and the foundation is for a great cause, and that'll be happening during Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest, so.
Thank you.
Trying to say if that's better than the pancake eating contest. Close try. I had one more announcement, Michigan Municipal League Conference is coming up the week of September 24th. I think it's the date, is that the date?
21st.
22nd. It's in New Orleans, which means we don't have as high expenditures as far as, I mean, it would just be educational, and there's some really great concurrent sessions, so if you haven't registered yet, I think it would be great if council attended. I know you're going to go, right?
Correct, and those that, we'd encourage, we're trying to schedule as much as possible carpooling, and I know everybody has different schedules, and sometimes they can stay a little later, they got to get back to Celine early or whatever, but as much as possible, if, I guess what I'll do is I'll send out an email to everybody and kind of throw out kind of a blanket schedule and see where that works.
It's been a while since it's been this close to Celine, so we should try to take advantage of it, it's a good, they have some good programs. And Mr. Rhodes, did you have an announcement or report?
Yes, ma'am, I have four quick things to mention. First is that tomorrow morning, between the hours of 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock, out at Hennyfield, our 14-foot tall antique-style four-sided clock is going to be installed. That'd be a major focal point out there at Hennyfield, that's really cool. So anybody got a little time on their hands and nothing to do between 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock tomorrow morning, come on out and watch us do that. Yeah, help lifting. The second thing is that the Fifth Corner Teen Center will have an open house the second weekend of October, the 8th and 9th, and will be open to, one of those evenings will be just for teens, and one of those days will then be for adult citizens to come through and just look at the space and try to visualize what it is that we're going to do there. Certainly, it's not all completed and won't be for a while, but we did want to let the public come in and walk around, look at things. Third thing is harvest time at the Rensselaer Farm will be on October 3. This is a change from previous times, we're moving to a Sunday afternoon, and we moved it away from the last Saturday because that was in conflict with the Harvest of the Arts. And so, October 3 in the afternoon, 12 to 5, out at the farm. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that our absent council member this evening is going to be the main course at a roast this Friday, and I thought I'd bring barbecue sauce, if somebody else wanted to bring potato salad.
Yeah, so if the chamber has tickets, I don't know if they're still here. But it's a fundraiser, and Chambers has tickets if you call their office. Any other reports or announcements? So public comment on the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city councils. Public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his name and address for the record.
Mary House, 600 Canterbury. Three things, Mr. Button did a nice job as far as on tornado warnings and the sirens, but the one thing I'm still asking is, what do we have for an emergency evacuation for the mobile home park that was not put in the, his comments that he had on television? And I'm still asking, where is the evacuation points? The other thing, I'm going back to Brecken Grill, this is probably the fifth time I've been here, because I've went to a public hearing. I am hoping that there is some address back as far as either removing the benches or allowing the people to walk, public to walk next to the building, and also trimming the plants. Not only do you only have three feet to walk in, you have these hanging baskets, and the tails are about 20 feet long. So it really, and I would hope that possibly something could, because I don't, I really am sincerely, 20 years on council and planning that I've been on, I think this is one of the things that I'm really very concerned about, and I would appreciate the council's input, and, thank you.
Is there any other citizen comment? There's no further citizen comment, is there any other citizen to come before the Celine City Council? Our next meeting is a week from tonight at 7:30 PM, and I'd like a motion to excuse the absence of Mr. Patrick Little.
I'll move that.
Ivy?
Second.
Second, Morrow? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A motion to adjourn at 8:37?
Move.
Second. Move Law? Ms. Ping? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.